Good evening and welcome to the November twentieth, twenty twenty-three Planning Board meeting. If we could please first stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first we have some correspondence. Um, there is a memo from Walt Daniels in here. Which says he feels we should rethink our no planning issues memo to the town board. He references that we are, uh, the keeper of the comprehensive plan which dwells extensively on the quality of life issues, which includes the design of safe roads, sidewalks, et cetera, also noise. And he goes into the riding of ATVs and the, the parks. I know we had an extension, extensive conversation about this law last time and felt that it'd be best left to the legislators at the board. Has that changed anyway with what we talked about last time?
I don't think it's a planning issue.
Any thoughts?
I don't see how the comments that are called out here can be.
Well, but.
It has to be site-specific. I mean, you're talking about large boulders, gates, and the similar. I mean, I just.
No.
You, you can't, you can't make a recommendation to the town board that that be included in all our site plan review. I think it's site-specific as to where a gate or any kind of traffic control be placed.
So if something came to us, we would review it at that.
I think, I think that's a given.
Right.
If we've got to explain that, I think there's bigger problems.
Okay.
I think there's also some of the issues of noise and so forth are handled in other aspects of the laws of our town, noise ordinances and so forth. So there's, there's enforcement capability for those things that are related to this type of activity. I think the law was pretty comprehensive in addressing some of the behavior.
Yeah, I think the memo gives examples, but it doesn't tell us how, how we could apply those examples to the site plan.
Right.
So I think we do that as part of our review.
And it has the individual applications going on it. Okay, then we'll move on to the meeting minutes of November sixth, twenty twenty-three. Any issues, comments, corrections?
Yeah, I have a correction. Uh, I was not present for the, um, vote on the Dorchester Glen subdivision, and I think that the minute should reflect that everyone voted, I except myself. I was absent.
Yep. Miles.
That's it.
John?
I have nothing at this time.
David? Okay, then, do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of November, uh, sixth, twenty twenty-three, as corrected?
Motion, second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We will move into the regular session portion of our meeting. First down the agenda, we have the Stammer subdivision, which is now the Kane residence. Uh, we did get one memo from Mr. Fury and Ms. Hickey, Beth Hickey, um, talking about the planting plan that was submitted. You're on.
Uh, if you guys could put up SY four A for me, my recent submission. I, I'm trying to log on, but well, anything to help me out here. Here we go.
Tech is great when it works.
Yes, loving it. So, uh, we, uh, received correspondence and we met with, uh, one of the individuals at our work session in regards to how to address the issue they have with our subdivision, at where actually our subdivision and our, um, proposed, um, site plan for development of five thirty-five Jerome Road. Uh, and what took place, uh, is that, um, to, the concern they have is, uh, we're on a hillside. We're part of a three-lot subdivision, more lots number, we're, we're developing lot number two. And lot number one on that, uh, screen in front of you is at the top of the map. And off the screen is actually the house site, uh, which is, uh, more toward the east of where our house is proposed. And for reference purposes, the darker lines on that, uh, map are the ten-foot contours of topography. And our house site happens to be thirty feet below the proposed house site in lot number one. Uh, we have a landscaping plan, uh, which was proposed the last time, uh, with the, uh, previous applicant, uh, and it consists of, uh, hedges of, um, of, um, uh, equivalent to juniper plants along the perimeter. Uh, and our plan included, uh, addition, uh, some, um, green giant arborvitae's along the roadway. And the concern of the neighbors is, uh, they're requesting a windbreak between, uh, our clearing and their house sites. Well, to start with, geometry-wise, we're thirty feet below their house. So if I waited about fifteen years or twenty years from now and watched my plant grow, I might create a buffer in about twenty years from now. Uh, but realistically, for us to put a buffer in, you know, we don't plant, you can't plant a, a evergreen more than like ten feet tall. It just won't grow and, and the ball won't, uh, won't adjust to the landscape. But, but nevertheless, we did propose two groups of three, uh, green giants, which will achieve, uh, heights of fifty-five feet. Uh, and we have to put them in groups of three because an isolated tree doesn't do well by itself. It breaks apart in the wind. Uh, that's why a forest, uh, is pretty durable to windstorms, uh, but a single tree, uh, seems to always fall apart when a big wind takes place. The winds we looked up, uh, are from the northwest predominantly. That is, uh, they're going, uh, from lower left-hand corner to upper right-hand corner. And we found out the winds, uh, through a, uh, a, um, USGS, uh, wind, uh, predominant wind, uh, program, which gives you directions of wind most of the time, say sixty percent to seventy percent of the time. So I took the, uh, the wind directions, uh, at northwest going from lower right-hand corner to upper right-hand corner. We put those big groups of trees in as you, as proposed on the site. One will protect the, uh, one will give a buffer to the tennis court, and the other one will give a, a buffer somewhat, uh, to the, uh, lot number, uh, one, uh, in the future at some date. But beyond that, uh, I, I really can't do much because if you look at the, at the property, we're coming through a flag, and we have to cut the trees and the great, regrade that little flag we have. So I can't put trees there because I've got a road there. And as, after, after we turn the corner onto the property where that row of, uh, arbo, of the, uh, arborvitae's is proposed, we're dropping down in grade. We're dropping literally twenty feet down with our project to our base elevation. Anyway, all I have left to play with is as I proposed, the trees in those pockets of three and three, plus that big row of our, our vitae's we have. There's really not much else I can do because the farther I plant on the lower portion of the project property in front of you, I'm just going downhill.
Be down to.
At such a big rate that it's not, it's not going to accomplish anything. So we gave it our best shot. Uh, on the neighboring property, unfortunately, they had to clear up to their property line for lot number one because that's where the septic was approved. We didn't have anything to do with that, but that was a subdivision-approved location. Now, you could, because the, the house is so far up the hill, you could pull the septic system up the hill, and they would have a, a buffering area to put their own plants if they had to, and that would be closer to the elevation of the house. And I, I hate to say that, that the neighbors have to carry a lot of that heavy load, but they have the grade and geometry and able to accomplish that. We just don't have it. I'm, I'm, I'm in a hole. I can't do much, I'm so far below where they are. And that's pretty much all I can do.
Okay. I have a neighbor who's a landscape architect, and he's got six of those exact evergreens along his, it's a wall of green, and it's a very, very tall wall of green, and I don't think they've been there ten years. It really creates, it's, it's unbelievable. If you ever go down a new road, trouble. You can't miss this. I mean, it is a wall of green.
It's like we saw in a logging road, I think, probably those trees that we pointed out when we were walking.
We get chased?
Saturday, before we got chased.
Okay.
I mean, I think those are similar trees.
Yeah, I, it, it would be a wall of green.
Yeah, it would be.
There's some arborvitae's that deer love and some that they don't.
This is the worst.
They don't.
Yeah, no, they, you gotta see this hedge. I mean, it's incredible, it really is a wall of green. John, any issues?
Well, I, I guess I want to just re-ask the question. You have the three and the three, that's what you're offering, right?
Yeah, I also have a, I have a hedge proposed already, which is fifteen feet high. At full growth along the property line, continuous.
Okay, what's the hedge? It's arborvitae?
No, it's, uh, boy, I remember this one.
So, uh, the, the three and the three are arborvitae that you?
Yeah, six total, yes. Uh, the green giants grow three feet a year.
Yeah.
They're deer resistant.
I just, just ask, if you could just go over again why you're selecting the three and the three, in other words, six additional trees?
I'm, I'm plucking them together in a, in a core of three as a triangular shape, and I'm, and I'm trying to use those to provide a, a nucleus eye of, of a steady, of some sort of statically, uh, wind-resistant cluster. Uh, and if I, if the winds are in the northwest direction, uh, if I put them in a straight line along the property line, these trees, I spread them out some more, what happened is they'd be isolated so, pickets or soldiers along the property line, and the wind would be hitting them pretty much perpendicular to the alignment of my tree line, and I'll just be blowing, I'll be throwing, uh, branches across the property line because an isolated tree just won't, won't be stable. It's, it's a problem with that type of tree.
How did you arrive at six trees? That's what I'm asking.
I just, I, I, a group of three is unstable.
It looks as though there could be a little bit more in there. I don't think that they're prohibitively expensive, uh, I, I would, I would think it, you know, a few more might help, help the wind situation.
How about five, two groups of five each? Add two more. Again, they grow forty-foot diameter, and you can see I don't have a lot of area to work with, but I, I, I could go, uh, five and five, that would be stable as well, you know? Just add two more on the plan above there as a, as a, as a mitigation or resolution to this.
Yeah, I, I, I think in the context of the, of the tree law with mitigation, I, you know, adding four additional doesn't seem to be a big stretch in terms of reasonableness.
I have no problem.
You know, and, and so, anything that could be done to mitigate, you know, the concerns of the neighbors, which as, you know, as the wind comes through and you remove all those trees, there was a lot of trees removed.
There were.
And the wind comes up that hill?
Yes.
You know, I, I understand what they're saying.
Yeah, I, I have no problem making that, instead of six new trees, we'll make it, uh, ten new trees, just to move it along.
That's.
What do you think?
Sounds good to me.
I tell you, those trees.
Sounds like they're going above and beyond to begin with.
Okay.
Any issues, David?
Nope.
Numbers to the board?
No. Sounds good.
Okay.
What's the next step?
Uh, I guess you're ready to go ahead with it, and you can just, as part of your vote, acknowledge that the modified condition would be for the ten trees rather than the six. Two locations.
We good? All right, then, do I have a motion for the resolution approving an amended site plan stormwater pollution prevention plan permit and tree permit for Stammer subdivision lot two?
Motion.
There's a second?
Second.
Hold the favor.
Hold it.
Aye.
Hold it.
Did I misread?
Not so fast. I have nothing to comment on the resolution that's currently before us and is now on the table by reason of the motion that was just made and seconded. But it raises for me the issue which we were talking about last time as to whether or not there should be included in this approval.
Oh.
Any of the provisions that we are looking for towards, you know, making sure that we have compliance later, uh, you know, further on down the road. Uh, and I know we didn't finish that discussion. I know we were waiting for advice of counsel on that, but I, I'm bringing it up because this is a resolution that's coming up without those provisions, and I'm wondering if we should put them in. Or if we're not ready to, I don't know how we should, we should handle it. I don't want to hold up this application either.
It's got nothing to do with your application.
Yes.
It's just internal, um.
Word, wording.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure what we should do, but I wanted to raise it before we went to the vote. So, what do you think?
And if, if we want to. If we want to, excuse me, sorry. If you want to request that we go back into executive session and discuss, you know, some of what was discussed last time in executive session, we can certainly do that. I don't know if you want to table that, though, till the end of this. Yeah, I, I'd, uh, you know, I don't know, you weren't here the last time, you know, we, we had a, we had a fairly lengthy discussion on that, and we decided to table it for the, for the time being.
Yeah, we were going to say, I was here for the end, for that, I came late to the meeting, I didn't miss the whole thing. Um.
You want to?
I don't know.
Why, why can't we? Why can't we approve, approve the, uh, resolution subject to, right? That's where they can move on.
Do you have an idea of the generalized description of those, uh, conditions?
Well, yeah.
Without the exact wording?
This is the ones that Bob drafted, two, two proposals.
Yeah. Two sentences.
Okay.
Either one, I think, or.
And I, I like to see it, if there's a way we can reserve on those two things and amend the resolution at, at a later date, then I'll do that. Or I would, you know, suggest that.
So currently, the resolution states, "The building permit may not be issued until all conditions listed here and have been addressed, and the site plans and stormwater permit have been signed by the chairman of the board and sent to the building inspector." What more are we asking? We're asking for the applicant to whatever it was he wrote.
Uh, I think I have it here, but.
Well, it's in last month's, last week's meeting.
So you're adding a, a condition of inspection compliance, would that be what we're referring to?
We've got issues that have come up from time to time where an application gets approved by our board with a number of conditions that need to be fulfilled prior to the pulling of a building permit and other conditions prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Right.
But they're not necessarily spelled out in such a way that, you know, it gives us the proper, you know, in my mind, and I think in some of our minds, not the proper enforcement where building permits come out, you know, are issued, and COs are issued, and the conditions that our board works on are not complied with.
Right.
Okay? So.
We'd be, uh, interested in having conditions. Well, well, I'm just trying to bring up this, we, we wouldn't mind if it was part of a CO condition requirement, so I could start construction, and then we could always add whatever, uh, compliance requirements you need. Because I'm, I'm a year away for a CO, you know?
So these are what we were considering.
So in this case, it may be two, the second one.
It's basically shining a light on what's already in the resolution.
Right.
And it's nothing, it's no new obligation, it's an obligation that we're basically bringing your focus to.
That's fine.
It's all we're doing.
Yeah, we're engineers.
So you're, you're well aware, because we know some people look at these and it's kind of boilerplate, and you, you know?
Right.
All, all of us have seen them before, and you tend to gloss over them naturally, and we're trying to bring greater attention to what's already in there.
Which is goo, a good idea.
All we're doing.
Right.
It'll prevent you from running into a problem later on, we think.
Yeah.
Perhaps, perhaps.
Aren't we awaiting counsel?
Well, we did refer it.
Yeah, but I think we're gonna tweak the language, what was the best way to go.
If we had a template in front of us, maybe it would be of us to just go into executive session for ten minutes, work this out, if this, if what I'm looking at is acceptable.
I think we've all seen that.
Yeah, we have, but we were, we were waiting.
I think it's more for.
Yeah, I don't sense any disagreement among us. I think it's just the advice of counsel, it may influence what we, what our thinking is. That's how I see it, so.
I'm gonna go into a quick.
Do that.
All right. I'm gonna tell you for ten minutes.
Sure.
We're gonna go into a quick advisement of counsel.
Yep.
On legal matters, and then we'll be right back. So if we could, just ask, we can clear the room for ten, fifteen minutes? Thank you for your patience and time.
Chairman, I just think.
Oh, yep.
I think you need a formal motion to go.
I move.
Oh, yes, do I have a motion?
Motion to go into executive session for advice of counsel.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Council or executive session, we're going to return to the. Alright, so we had a motion on the floor for the resolution approving amended site plan stormwater pollution prevention plan permit entry permit. For stormer subdivision lot two as revised. First revision is no, be it further resolved, no building permit. Well, sorry, sorry. It's just a chicken scratch, no offense. No building permit shall be issued until all the requirements of this resolution as listed and/or delineated on a summary sheet and signed by the town. Of Yorktown Director of Planning or duly appointed resolution.
Representative.
Representative. Sorry, guys. Having met or completed their directive planning shall obtain the approval of the planning board members prior to signature. The second part is be it resolved, a certificate of occupancy may not be issued until all site work is complete. And as built has been submitted and the Director of Planning or appointed representative has certified that the site is complete and the conditions of the approval have been met. Do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Good luck with your home.
Thank you.
Sorry to keep you waiting.
Will that be emailed to us?
Yeah.
We have to get it, we have to get it executed by them, so it'll be next week.
All the best. Okay, do I have a motion to move into the work session?
Motion.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the Mucci residents, AKA Brookside Village subdivision lot one. This is a discussion of site plan changes, locations two seven four Lenmark Court. How you doing?
I'm Matt Mucci and my wife Melissa.
How you doing, guys?
Hi.
So we started the project and we ran into water. So we're, we're asking, requesting to move the first floor elevation from four oh five to four oh seven, just to have be safer down the road. You know, because this is going to be our forever home.
At what point, at where did you run into water?
About three feet.
Three feet down?
Yeah. So we're gonna do all the, the grading up to what it was going to do, but now we're just raising it up a little bit.
So you're not gonna have a basement under the house?
We are, so we're, yeah, we're requesting to, to raise it up.
Are you raising it up two feet?
Two feet, yeah.
And you hit water three feet down?
Yeah, so right now we're, we're leveled off and we have a sump pump running, but, so we want to just raise that up and hopefully. We're able to then use gravity, because we did find a drain on site at the front of the property after it was cleared. It's a town catch basin, so we'll actually be able to run the footing drains with gravity instead of having a sump pump twenty-four seven.
Are you raising the garage and basement elevations along with that?
Yes, so we're raising the two feet, but not necessarily the, the garage, because we're, we're pretty much on grade there. So we're going to maintain that, but really it's just the first floor, so we can raise that basement up a little bit. We'll have to add steps in the garage and possibly the, the front porch.
So the slope of your driveway is not changing?
It shouldn't, maybe it has to come up maybe a foot or so, so that we can just get into the, the garage. But it's a very level lot.
You know, Dan's looked at this, John?
Yes.
No. Dan has not looked.
He spoke to Dan.
He spoke to Dan, there's nothing as yet to really look at in terms of a new plan, so. Any plan we have shows the finished floor at four oh five.
We spoke to Dan in depth this afternoon, and I've also been in contact with Will, who signed off on it, and I believe Dan was here earlier.
And Dan, Dan did indicate to us in writing that he has no objection to the raising of the floor. I just want to be clear that there's no new grading plan, you know, vis a vis discussion about the driveway, so and so forth. It, it seems to me as though you, you have, on your current plan, you have some fill that you're bringing in to get it up to four oh four, is that right?
Four oh four, yes, for the, the basement, like the grade on the.
So right in front of the house, you're actually doing some filling, right?
Yes.
Are you going to do some additional filling now?
That's what we're gonna do, yeah, just to maintain, so we don't have the whole foundation sticking out, like two extra feet. We're just gonna bring in more fill around, so that you're not staring at that foundation.
Yeah, you want to make sure you comply with any height restrictions or, are they close on that or the height?
Well, that, if they bring, if they bring fill in, that will change the calculation. I'm sure they'll be fine with the height, let me put it that way.
They fill in the front?
Right, 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 right. So, we don't have a, a grading plan or a formal plan, could we, I guess just talk to the issue of raising the house? Maybe if we have no issue with that and they move forward, what do you suggest?
I suggest, I think, I, I, from what I see, I don't think we have any substantial objection. But we don't have.
Yeah.
A drawing to ascertain all of the implications quite yet. So, I think you can vote to accept the change. But I think the condition should be that there's a, something that comes through that we can rely on in terms of, you know, getting the CO done, getting inspections, knowing what's out there. Once, once their engineer or the designer starts to put some of these elevations together, you know, that's when the things gets fleshed out, you know. You can do it in the field, except you're not going to know what's happening.
Yeah, so I'm sure they're gonna have to look at the connection to the basin, Dave Paganelly would probably get involved in it too.
Will has, has seen that, we walked the property on site, and he said, so originally the sump pump was gonna go to a swale towards the, along the driveway.
Yeah.
Now it's on the other side of the property going to this catch basin, so it, it works out and it's beneficial, so it's actually going somewhere, the, the roof leaders.
You see that, I mean, it's gotta be reflected somewhere.
So, in theory, do we, does anybody have an issue with the home being raised to two foot?
No.
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 So we would just have to see the details on it.
It's gotta be documented somehow, so, because we gotta approve something other than the wording.
Right, so, I, do we vote on just the height at this point, or can we say we're?
I think, I think you could vote on the height with the condition that there is a, a design drawing that comes through. In a certain, you know, well before CO, in other words, Mr. and Mrs. Mucci, I'm suggesting that you get your engineer, talk to your contractor, they'll both understand what they're both talking about. He can commit that to paper, you send it in, we can, you know, make sure that they know that it's what they were expecting by taking this vote. This way you can keep moving.
Is that right?
Yeah, it's just, it's just a, yeah, just to go back, you know, with the engineers, costs a lot of money.
But we can't ultimately approve something that's not drawn.
And you gotta, we all want to make sure that whatever you're doing works, because this is gonna be your, you know, forever home?
It's gonna make our lives better, you know, not worrying about the water.
The devil's in the details, though, you gotta make sure, especially as new homeowners, you'd be surprised how many people buy homes and get involved in it. And you get side swiped, I mean, it's, it's incredible, so you also want to see what it's gonna look like too, right? So, we'll take a vote on the height, which sounds like we're not gonna have any issues with it, you, a very good engineer. You're gonna have to come back to John and Dan and just formalize whatever's gonna be done there.
So not to another meeting, just in the offices?
Hopefully not to another meeting, because I'm sure the description should end up being what everybody understands to.
Yes.
Happen, if there's some, something that the engineer uncovers as you're going through, then we'll just have to talk about it again. This way it'll keep you moving.
Okay.
I think one of the things you should realize is if you don't document this, your financing could be in jeopardy, because at some point somebody's gonna look for a drawing that's approved, that represents what you've done. And if you've done something that's not on the drawing that was approved, you're gonna wait a long time to get that undone. It's easier to do it now than it is later, believe me.
Thank you, Mr. Architect. No, you're right, you're a hundred percent right. Alright, so, there is. Proposal in front of us for the Mucci residents, formerly or also known as Brookside Village subdivision lot one, discussion of site plan changes, locations two seventy-four Lenmark Court. That proposed first floor elevation from four oh five to four oh seven. It was previously approved by resolution twenty-three dash fourteen on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. So I have a motion to approve the height change with the noted plans to come back and get approved.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
So, on the site, current site plan that's approved, there's a reference to four oh five, so they'd obviously have to have that changed.
Yeah, that's.
The footprint of the house is not changing, it's not going left or right, it's just going up.
Right, modular?
So, so, do they need to get an entire new grading plan done, because they're gonna bring in fill? Or is this, that portion of it just needs to be revised?
I think you're gonna have to show the grading, so it doesn't impact the neighbors.
They're gonna bring.
Especially with the water issue.
Extra fill now, I think.
Right, so where, where those grading lines are, a four oh four and so forth, that is what's gonna change.
Yeah, that will change.
Okay.
Right.
That may change a decision about the garage and the driveway, so it may not.
Right, okay. Sorry.
Alright. Sweet a motion?
Who's the motion?
Alls in favor?
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
You're all set.
Thank you.
Welcome to Yorktown. Okay, next we have the IBM battery storage, this is a discussion of a site plan, locations one thousand one Kichwan Road. How are you?
I'm doing well, thanks. This is. Okay, so. What we're asking for tonight is to amend the, the original approval from a one megawatt battery to a two megawatt battery that's paired with the solar system at IBM. And I'll just go through some refreshing here of what was done before. So this is a rendering of the solar carport that goes over the, the parking lot at IBM.
You're not up.
And just to give you a sense of where that's at.
You gotta put it on the screen.
Sorry?
It's not shared yet.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. I don't know. I thought I had it. Sorry about that. Seven nine eight, pardon me.
Someone dropped off Uber Eats at our house, it was the neighbor, went to the wrong address.
Sorry, okay, so, that's the rendering, obviously, which you've seen before, and this is the drawing, so it's over the parking lot there. The blue dot is the location of where the battery is, that's behind the salt barn that we went out and saw that day. So nothing's changing about the location or the limits of disturbance, it's just a different sized battery on the same location. And even the size is very similar, just because of the way it's, it's distributed, but it doesn't, it doesn't change the site plan at all. It's just simply going from one megawatt to two megawatt, and you'll see what that looks like in a moment here. This was from today, so this is the current state of the parking lot, the, all the steel is up, all the decking's up. It was, it was put the steel underground first and the drainage, then, then put up the, the superstructure going back across the lot. And then we're on the last phase where the rail and, and all the, the modules and the wiring goes up. So, we expect to be done late Q two, Q three of next year, so. And the EV, the electric vehicle charging stations are going in now, the inverters, which you see up there on the column, are there now. So the project's progressing nicely. And again, this is the, the, the location of the medium voltage gear, and then the, the, the transformers are up on the left there. And then down in, the battery is, is below in the salt barn over in this area here, I'm not sure if you can see my cursor or not, I'm not sure I can see it, but. So that's the salt barn, so you'll, so even from the IBM property, you won't even see the battery, the battery is concealed away. And this is all approved already, but just, just to refresh your minds, what's there? So this was the original rendering of the one megawatt battery. It's a different elevation, the battery, it's down lower in the back there, but I'll show you that in a second. And this is what the, the Tesla battery would be look like, so we're switching from power and at one megawatt to Tesla at two megawatt. And it's the same sized pad, it's just these, these one megawatt units sit back to back. So they'll basically sit within the same pad size that we had permitted earlier. And because we knew early on that we'd probably be going to a two megawatt battery, we initially approved the, the pad originally to accommodate that. So nothing has changed, except, again, the manufacturer type, it's now Tesla, and it's up to two megawatts. And the utilities approved that, IBM's approved it, so it's just.
Have you talked to the fire department?
Fire department comes next, and the fire department is, is a big part of this, so when we have the, the site plans that'll show everything, we'll bring the fire department out there, get their input on it. We'll bring in our experts too, to work with them, to try and make it a learning process, so they know what's the chemistry, what's going on, what's the whole protocol for what if? How do you deal with this, what's all the safety features that are built into it? So there's a lot of steps like that within the, the building, electrical permit, the fire department, that also need to be done to IBM satisfaction as well as the town. So that's all absolutely part of this, this is just revising what was done already as far as planning board approval.
Anything?
Just, these are different perspectives on it.
I don't have anything.
Counselor? You work for Power Flex, right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I forget your first name?
Uh, Dennis, Dennis Baer.
How are you, Rich? So Dennis, you're, you're responsible for the solar too?
Yes.
So you're obviously, this is a little off topic, but you're into the industry here, right? This is what you do.
I'm doing it for seventeen years.
Can I ask you a question? Are you seeing Con Edison doing any infrastructure projects in the state of New York that would offset the need for adding solar or wind power? They putting in new plants? They hitting any, any, uh, nuclear plants that you know of?
No, they're not putting in any nuclear plants.
There's no plants at all? Have you seen?
No. They're, they're, all the upgrades that they're doing is to accommodate more wind and solar renewables.
And Con Ed funds a lot of this. So they're pushing the development of this stuff, right?
Oh, yeah. That's how they make their money.
Right.
Yep. They'll, they'll rate base it.
Jefferson Valley that they, I think, did direct.
Oh, God, we're missing it there.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're generally good partners to work with, you know, and, and ultimately the goal is to not only green the grid, but also lower the cost for everybody. But, you know, you've got, the, the state's anticipating the electrification of so much heating, transportation, uh, so the, you know, the whole economy. So they're, they're literally projecting to double the capacity of the grid. So it's not just, you know, new solar resources and wind. It's doubling the load of the grid. So they've gotta basically upgrade the grid from an old one-way system that's built to accommodate so much load to now going to a, a much more efficient system that doesn't just operate like this, you know, peak in the summer and then it's, you know, very little capacity utilization throughout the rest of the year. They're trying to do a dual peaking system now, winter too. So it'll be much more efficient as well as greener and complying with state law and the CLCPA. So, you know, there's some things when it comes to the social engineering of the grid that can be problematic. But in general, the way it's being carried out is thoughtful and thankfully you have the New York ISO up in, up in, uh, they're up near Albany. They're the grid operators. They're the ones who literally keep the lights on and they'll, they won't approve anything that they know is going to, uh, damage the reliability of the grid, because that's number one. Because when the grid goes out, people die. That's, so, um, so a long answer to your question, but yeah, Con Ed is, is doing a lot of upgrades to their systems, particularly for offshore wind.
But in reference to wind or, and solar, right?
Yeah, this one actually is, is part of offsetting the local peak in the grid. So this, the battery gives us the ability to export power when the grid is, is reaching the capacity of the substation. So rather than having to spend a billion dollars to upgrade the substation, you shave the peak with smart assets like this when and where it's needed.
So a project like this is more holistically looked at, at a state level. So they are looking at areas where you need this.
Yeah.
And this will, in essence, help the entire area.
Yes.
So not just IBM.
No, no, exactly. This, this is an identified substation, what they call an LS RV substation, where they specifically want smart capacity. And I say smart, batteries that can respond rather than solar that just comes and goes with the, with the sun, which is reliable to a certain degree over a period of time, but any given day it can come and go. The battery is very reliable power when they need it the most. So it's a community benefit as well as a benefit to IBM.
Thank you very much.
It's set up as a, you know, a community solar project internal to IBM. So their employees that live within the area too are gonna be able to benefit from it, not just corporate.
Appreciate it.
Putting the two megawatt batteries, are you actually experiencing fuller utilization of the array earlier than you had planned?
No, it doesn't. It, what it does is it gives us the ability to, uh,
Store and export.
Yeah. So we export more power when it's needed. And, and the, the cost of going from one megawatt to two megawatt seems like that's gonna be worked. That, that actually won't be decided until NACERDA comes out with the incentives, which are expected in February. But it's very likely, given that, that the, the amount of capacity that's available for us to export balances out better with a two megawatt battery and the solar. Because the solar will start to taper off in the late afternoon. And there's four megawatts of capacity potential there, but that may drop to two, you know, three or two late in the afternoon. And the battery's gonna be affirmed too. So it, that's the thing that really makes it a smart grid asset that, that helps reduce that peak reliably. So it's a better benefit to the community. It's a better financial benefit to IBM.
Quick question.
Some more pictures here. So that, that's, you know, give you another sense of where it is down below. Um, and again, where that is. And that's looking up from Pine Bridge Road. But the thing I wanna show you is this. So this was the neighbor's fence. So that fence was dilapidated and this is what it looks like now.
That's great.
It was a condition. There it is. But I appreciate what you just did there because.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Looks good.
It's IBM.
I would assume they're happy with that?
Oh, they're very happy with it. Yeah. And there's plantings behind that. So they planted not just in front of the fence, but behind it so that the neighbor has good screening.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Quick question, Dennis. Uh, is there, since this is always, this is, all this stuff is evolving pretty quickly, is there required separations from the equipment to the nearest structure?
Um, so the nearest structure is that salt barn.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it's a utility shed. There is, there is more than what code would require, you know, both NEC and your code. So it's back far enough. It's not gonna, you know, impact anything. And that was what we went through.
So there is a requirement, this is in excess of the requirement?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And you'll see all of that, like, you know, like I said, we're gonna go through the, the building, the, you know, permit, the electrical permit, the fire department. And I hope that by the time we're done, you kinda have a blueprint for how, how to, you know, a best plan of action for how do you approach this stuff and come out with even better regulations and the fire department knows more, you know, it's, why not? You know, it's not just get one through, it's.
So you could put the requirement on the plan?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, 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 all of that.
I would ask that that gets.
Yeah.
Put on there.
Yeah. And everything that, every document that was in the original approval that was cited in that, we'll have the very same thing for this. It really doesn't, it doesn't change much.
Yeah.
You know, but, you know, you can always improve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
Really appreciate it.
Yeah, sure. Always a pleasure. Thank you.
So how do we handle this one? You know, update the resolution or?
Yeah, I think we have to update the resolution. So we can do it, uh, on the fourth.
Okay.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, next, we have Guiding Eyes for the Blind. This is a trainee school kennel. This is a discussion of a site plan and special permit. Counselor, have you seen this?
I'm sorry?
Have you seen this?
I don't, certainly don't know which hall it is.
The tree.
Is this a new one? Apparently the rest of the team saw it. I was out of the office today. I did not see that. So thank you for, for checking. David Steinmetz from the law.
On vacation?
Um, at a funeral.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, um, I had told John, I had apologized to John. I was unable to make a call earlier today. Um, but the rest of the team was on it. I wasn't sure I was gonna be here tonight, but I really wanted to get here tonight. Um, so I'm glad to be here. Uh, David Steinmetz from the law firm of Zaren. And Steinmetz here representing Guiding Eyes. Um, and, um, apparently Joe and Tony have had a chance to review that latest memo. We have been working with staff since we last appeared. Um, we had a sit-down meeting with John and Robin, Joe, Tony and I, specifically with regard to trees as well as noise mitigation. Tony spent a lot of time trying to address concerns that were raised by the tree commission, um, by John and Robin. We kind of, uh, re-packaged the explanation of how we are mitigating. Um, we also, uh, at, at the request of, of your board and staff, provided additional detail on noise mitigation, specifically the specification for the building materials as well as the fencing, um, the sound, uh, the sound dampening fencing. So we think, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we're at a point on those two critical issues that we have been going back and forth and trying to address, um, legitimate concerns that were raised, uh, that we've mitigated those concerns. We think we're in a position tonight where, uh, you can call for staff to prepare a resolution of approval for the next meeting. We've got our entire team here. We're happy to address, um, noise, trees, anything else, um, that the board wishes to discuss. Uh, we're, we're here, but, uh, Bill Ma from Guiding Eyes, uh, is, is here with me. And we've been at this for a while. We would like to try to turn the corner and start to, to tie things together.
Anybody from the board have any additional concerns? I think the, do you get the gist of the tree?
Yes. So we're, we agree. And we also had a meeting with our environmental consultant, who is preparing a final report.
Okay.
Uh, but the gi- the gist of it is that, um, our staff, the con, uh, environmental consultant and the applicant are in general agreement that mitigation package is adequate and sufficient. And that there will be some things that will come in afterwards. In other words, they'll be making some decisions pursuant to the development of their forest plan, management plan. So those will be a condition. So the discussion today was between now and the resolution to work on, you know, a good set of conditions that, you know, will get those in place and that you will know, uh, if things change, to the extent that they change, you know, when, when those decisions are made, you'll know what's happening. But generally, I think that we're in agreement that the mitigation is adequate, uh, at this point. Um, there is some additional work that needs to be done. If you wanna talk about the wetlands, we also talked about that this afternoon. Generally, we think that that is at the same level. Uh, I think there's a little bit more work to be done than there is the trees, but we, we do believe that those can be handled as, um, as conditions. The, our consultant is aware of that and they will actually be assisting us in developing those conditions. Does that sound correct to you guys?
That's correct. I should've said wetlands as well, John. You're correct.
David, any, any, you ready? Members of the board?
As long as these, the impacts of the, some of the things identified, and you know, you responded to Barton and the JUDICE. And I, I assume they'll give us a final, um, opinion, you know, recommendations on that. And that's okay.
Yeah.
We should go.
Yeah, I think that'd been a great help.
Just one other thing that, uh, shows up in the response memo from the applicant is that they have decided not to offer the conservation easement. So I think you should get an explanation of that and have a discussion about that.
So I appreciate you raising that, John. I was just confirming with, with Joe whether that had been finally resolved today. So your, your outside consultants have asked my client to, um, consider putting a conservation easement on the property. Guiding Eyes' position on that is that this site is already extremely highly regulated. We have a wetland on the east. We have a wetland on the west. Um, we obviously have a stream, um, culvert corridor along the north side next to two oh two. So it, it already constrains the property and pinches it in. We're already obligated under your town code to abide by that and comply with those requirements. In addition, I don't think I have to tell the board, because you kind of just reminded me as I walked in here, we spent the last three months going back and forth with B and L on trees. Um, as a result of which, we have a forestation, a, 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 a foresting plan that's going on on the site. We're completely complying with the town's, um, tree removal law in terms of mitigation. So in sum, Guiding Eyes' position is, why are we being asked to go further and constrain this property in perpetuity by, by imposing a conservation easement? To us, this is not a property that calls for a conservation easement. If in fact, the kennel structure is, uh, needs to expand or modify, we've gotta come back for modified site plan approval. Conversely, if Guiding Eyes picks up and leaves Yorktown and the site gets sold and somebody decides to take down this state-of-the-art kennel structure, because that's not what the next user is going to do, they're gonna have to come in, they're gonna have to comply with site plan review, SECR, wetlands and trees. So to ask a not-for-profit that's already been through this process on this property to constrain it with a conservation easement, I understand why B and L's asking, because it never hurts to ask. The answer respectfully is no. We don't think that those property rights should be constrained in perpetuity on this site.
I gotta agree with you.
Okay.
I agree a hundred percent.
Yeah.
I should've stopped it. No.
Any other?
How to take yes for an answer?
Any other issues, concerns? All right. So they'll start working on the resolution.
Great.
They'll get in touch with you. Very sorry for your loss.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And John will be in touch to help you and Robin and anything we can on the resolution.
Chairman, can I take one more quick?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh-oh.
No, say.
The Columbo moment.
One, yeah. Should I touch my head?
Guys, quick motion, we're outta here.
Um, a little explanation on the, on the sound barrier that's been selected, you know?
Can't hear you, John.
Can't. Step a little closer, David.
Would you like a further, Sumit?
Can you pass it on to John?
Good evening to the members of the board. Um, I think I've met most of you, but probably not David when I was here last time. So hello, my name is Sumit and I, uh, I'm here from Saramian Associates. Uh, just to give a quick intro, we do acoustic noise and vibration consulting. Uh, we are based in Midtown Manhattan, but we work on projects all over the US, in Canada, some other parts of Europe, India, and touching some, some of the Asian countries as well. Um, so I was here last time and we went through, uh, a very detailed discussion about how we were planning to mitigate the sound, what that would look like, how, you know, adding the, the noise barriers, where would it bring down the, the noise level? So just to update what we have changed from last time, if we go to page number four. Joe? Yep. So we have added a section at the bottom, if we can zoom in. Uh, so we've added some STC ratings in here to kind of give you an idea of what, um, the ratings of our overall building profile or facade profile would look like. We have a window, um, that has an STC rating of thirty-two that we have added in terms of information. And then we have the CME wall, which we did touch, uh, on last time. And the STC rating on that is, is fifty-five. Um, and the last thing that we added was the selection of the noise barrier. Um, if we go to, yep, if we go to page number three, Joe, quickly, go back, on the, the bullet points there. So bullet point number four talks about the screen where it would be, uh, which we discussed last time we were here. Uh, and with the decision of choosing the AIL's sound, silent protector from AIL's, um, sound walls brochure, which would have, um, STC thirty-two, which is, um, similar to what we also have on the glass as well. So that in, in terms of the updates to where we were last time, those are kind of the, uh, the updates that we have made to our report and to, um, give you guys a little bit, a bit more information in terms of what are the acoustic, um, ratings that we're working with, um, to bring, bring the noise from the dogs.
Which product is it that's there on the screen?
Yep. So, yep, it's the top one, the silent protector. So it is almost like perforated metal.
It has absorptive material inside?
Insulation inside, yes.
John had specifically asked at, at some prior interactions he and I had that we needed to come back with the STC rating and that we had to select that actual sound barrier. Originally, um, our team had submitted kind of a, almost an advertising brochure of a number of different walls that could've been selected. And, um, John made us go shopping and decide which one we were gonna select. So, you got it.
Let's Google it. It's some stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's good stuff.
Yeah. Just put it on.
I, this goes back to a question that Adam had asked earlier on. If for any reason that this is put up and we find that there's a deficiency, in other words, noise is getting out rather than being kept in, is there any way or anything that can be added onto this to step it up to make it more soundproof?
So i- in effect, if we, if we have a, a noise violation of some kind, if we're, we're.
So at the moment, as, um, as I was talking through last time, at the moment, we are not, um, targeting inaudibility. We are targeting for the noise levels from the dogs to be below the ambient noise level. So, and the ambient noise levels could be wind, could be traffic, whatever's going on around you, right? Um, so with that, um, you're not achieving perfect inaudibility, but what you will, you know, if you were a resident at your property line, probably taking a stroll, what you would hear that it's, you know, it's a, it's a dog bark at a. what you would hear that it's, you know, it's a, it's a dog bark at a distance. That's, that's all you're going to hear. If you were a resident that's inside, inside your house, inside your resident, we, we feel like there, it's unlikely that you would even hear the dog because you're inside, you have other stuff that's, that's going on around you. So, at the moment, we feel very comfortable with.
Bob's question's a little different, though. The question is, if, if in fact, everything we think is going to happen doesn't happen, is there something, an additional layer?
So, in, in terms, so, I, I did take that, we did take that question from Aaron last time, and we went back, you know, ran some more numbers to see, because I think there was a question that came up is, would, would the mitigation or the additional mitigation mean increasing the height of the wall? Because that did come into, you know, into discussion last time. So, we ran some numbers, and to mitigate the noise even more, the, the screen wall would need to go substantially up in terms of the height. But at that point, if, if we are not satisfied in terms of the noise we are hearing, if we have complaints, I think we'll have to go back to, you know, changing the programming a bit to see if we can change, you know, decrease the number of dogs or can, can the, you know, can we, can we do something programmatically? We'll have to fall back on that.
My point last time was not so much limited to, okay, I'm going to use this type of material in this location at this height, but to make sure that our resolution incorporates the goals that you're trying to accomplish with your plan. In other words, that the noise will be limited to a certain amount above or below what ambient level, whatever standard you're going for. My suggestion was that that goes into our resolution as the, as the standard here. And that you, you know, how you're going to accomplish it at this point is what we're hoping to achieve. And I think that's what Bob is bringing up again, that it's not just, okay, once you do that material at this height and this location and this thickness, we really want the noise level to be as you projected. And that standard needs to be put in somewhere as a condition.
But if I recall the last time you spoke, we talked about also the changing in the landscaping, which you did not include.
Nope. Yep.
In your.
Yep.
Uh, calculation. So, that would add.
Yes.
To that.
Uh, landscaping and, and the terrain, every, every, all of that would add, add to the mitigation.
And I'm sure if, if, if there was at some point, because we don't want another light issue like we've had in the past, I'm sure there's things that could be added out there that could, landscaping-wise, that could probably mitigate even further. If it got to that point.
If, it's, it's unlikely because you can't rely on landscaping to give you like a certain acoustic rating. But in, if it got to that point, like I mentioned earlier, we'll have to go back to programming and figure, and correct it programmatically.
So, responding to Aaron's comment, let's see, let's work with John on how that condition regarding noise is going to appear. I don't want it to be, and hopefully you, you have a better sense of what Aaron's looking for in the first instance. I don't want it to be inconsistent with the town's noise ordinance. I want to have a, I understand that we, it's in everybody's interest for us to have a, some kind of a objective standard that we, we can all look at. We don't want to argue about, are we compliant, are we not compliant? But I want, I want to use the town's noise ordinance to provide some kind of guidance so that we don't, you all don't just pick something out of thin air and in effect legislate noise.
Not, it's, it's purely based upon the materials that you, as the applicant, have submitted so far.
So, so what you're saying is tie our noise levels to what Sumit is telling us our noise levels are going to be. So, we know whose neck is on the flagpole out front.
We have to know what the passing grade is. Otherwise, we don't know whether we passed or not.
The good news is, we really do have a lot of confi, we've spent a lot of time and a lot of effort.
I understand.
And so, we do have a lot of confidence. So, as long as that's the standard we're tying it back to, that we, we should be fine. And the good news for Bob's question is, we could always either look at the fence adjustment or go back to Dr. B and tell her fewer dogs are outside at any given time, which is something that is not in GEB's best interest.
Yep.
Got it.
Good?
All good here.
We'll see you on, hopefully, John, the, the fourth we're going to target?
Yes.
Sounds good. Thank you all.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, close with wishing everybody a very happy Thanksgiving.
Everybody have, yes, I should have.
All the best.
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
So, a motion to close the, the meeting.
Motion.
Second, all's in favor.
Aye.